Would you mind coming forward, please?
Please proceed, sir.
Well, I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for inviting me and thank the council for having me in tonight. Just want to mention some activities we're having here in the city.
Yes, sir.
You all have been just so gracious to us for the past eighteen years. We have been blessed to have the depiction of a very historic event happen in our city, and I wanted to thank you for that. And just know that thousands of people every year have walked over sidewalks to view the nativity and to be reminded of what it represents. There are families who have made a tradition of it, and one family in particular spoke to me just today, and they inquired if we were doing that again, and they said yes, and I said yes, and they said they'll be here. Eighteen years ago, they started by bringing their own child. That child is now a parent, and they wanted to bring their grandchild to the event.
That's fantastic.
Talk about building deep roots, so thank the city for that.
Thank you.
Let us pray. We thank you, God, for the privilege of the cool of this evening. As you did with your first son, Adam, we invite you once more to come down and visit with us this evening. By your Spirit, will you encourage, talk to the hearts of these your servants, this noble council, as you ask them to make decisions concerning your peoples? You know our hearts, dear God, even to our inner thoughts. So we pray for each person so gathered here in this room, for each unvoiced prayer, our concern. Lord, hear our prayer. For those whose hearts are battered by sorrow or broken relationships, for those whose lives know only conflict and confusion, for those whose bodies are tired and tested beyond their ability to endure even for another year, we pray, Lord, hear our prayer. It is indeed still your name that is called wonderful. You're called counselor. You're called the mighty God. You're called the everlasting Father and the Prince of Peace. We choose this day by faith to make the good news of great joy a reality in each and every part of our lives, so that others will see the true gift of the season of Christmas. Lord, we greatly anticipate your return, and if you tarry, our only prayer should remain, we pray that there be peace on earth, goodwill towards men. Hear this, our joyful prayer. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Hugo. If that can't make you go weak in the knees, I don't know a prayer that will. Hugo Bryan Porter is the associate pastor at Lighthouse World Outreach Ministries here in Monroe, and they do the live nativity on the historic courthouse grounds on Monday through Friday of next week, and I hope you all take a chance to go by yourselves and with your families and spend a little bit of time. Call this meeting to order, the City Council for the City of Monroe, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, six o'clock or six oh five. Roll call. Let the record reflect that all members of council are present. I need a motion for the approval of the agenda, please.
A motion?
I have a motion on the floor by Mr. Little. Is there a second?
Second.
That was a second by Ms. Crawford. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the approval of the consent agenda, this would be the council minutes from November, executive session minutes from November, planning commission, historic preservation commission, DDA, convention and visitors bureau from October and November, and I need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda, please.
I'm moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Malcolm. Is there a second?
Second.
That was a second by Mr. Boyce. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to public presentation, probably the most meaningful presentation that we have had in a very, very long time, definitely more meaningful than any presentation that we've had since I've been mayor. Ms. Kirk, do you mind stepping up toward the front, please? I know, I know. Makes you feel any better, I looked at your sister, just expecting her to pop right up. You're good right there. Ms. Hilton with GMA. Ms. Hilton, are you here? I'm gonna let you go first, and then I'm gonna go, and then Chris Bailey's gonna go.
Well, thank you for allowing me to be here this evening to honor Debbie, and I'm here on twofold. First, I'll put on my Georgia Municipal Clerks Association hat, and I would like to just to tell you how much that we appreciate the clerks profession, and you being the city clerk for Monroe, and what you have meant to the association, and I'd like to read a letter of recognition that our president wrote for you to share with you, okay? So Debbie, congratulations. On behalf of the Georgia Municipal Clerks Association, I would like to congratulate you on your upcoming retirement as the city clerk for the city of Monroe with over thirty-two years of public service. It is truly an outstanding achievement to have the same clerk, to be in the position and be at the same city for this many years. Yes, it is. Your successful career demonstrates your commitment to public service and your community. In addition to serving the city of Monroe, you have also mentored many new clerks in your area, sharing advice and guidance and help them in any way that you can for the clerks profession. We are grateful for your contributions to the clerks profession and wish you well. Please accept this heartfelt congratulations on your retirement and our thanks for your years of service. I wish you all the best in this, your next chapter of life, and this is signed by our president, Vicki Wainwright. So this is presented to you on behalf of the Clerks Association. Now, I'm gonna put on my GMA hat, and the Georgia Municipal Association has a lifetime service award, and we always try to recognize those officials and clerks and managers who retire after thirty-five years of service. You came real short of that, thirty-five years, but we wanted to do something for you, and we want you to know how much GMA appreciates your contributions of being a government employee for thirty-two years, over thirty-two years. GMA recognizes that city clerks are the foundation of a city, and we are a vital part of city government, and so with that, they would like to present with you a certificate of appreciation and a certificate of recognition for your thirty-two years of service, public service to the city of Monroe. (applause)
I've already tried to get her to come back to work.
Well, Debbie is going to... Debbie's gonna put those on the wall in our office that should be there for about two weeks. And now it's time for a proclamation, Ms. Kirk. I'll start reading while you're walking. Whereas Ms. Debbie Kirk has served our sweet town since I was a child, trained several mayors, city administrators, city councilmen, customer service representatives, accountants, directors, put Brian Thompson in his place on more than one occasion, and has a steadfast loyalty to our fair city. There you go, Brian. Whereas after thirty-two years, she has had enough of all of our nonsense, and whereas during her tenure, she's become known as one of the best city clerks in the state of Georgia, and whereas she has a wealth of knowledge about the city of Monroe and her operations, and whereas she has taken on more tasks voluntarily, which has resulted in a months-long effort to divide her responsibilities, and whereas she will begin taking her... she will be taking with her three decades of institutional knowledge, and whereas her personal phone number will be kept handy by all elected officials, department heads, administrative professionals, and others, so we can know what to do next, and whereas her family has devoted years of serving and bettering Monroe and Walton County, now therefore I, John S. Howard, Mayor of the City of Monroe, do hereby declare Tuesday, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, as Debbie Kirk Day in Walton County, Georgia. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Monroe to be affixed this thirteenth day of December, the year of our Lord, two thousand twenty-two. And I have a letter and a Christmas card. This one, I had to take a little shot at Brian, I get Chris Bailey on this one. Ms. Kirk, you welcomed me with open arms and have spent five years trying to get me to act right, and I appreciated every bit of advice and direction. As you have such a sweet and genteel disposition, I decided to look for some quotes that really captured your essence. I will not read them all, but I do have one. You're the epitome of a true steel magnolia. As Clarice Belcher said to Anell, I just changed the name, I heard this very often, "Very good, Chris Bailey, smoking like a true smart ass."[765.38][765.38](laughter) There are a few more quotes that I won't read, just for the sake of time. Congratulations and best wishes for happiness and a very, very long life without us. Yes, ma'am, thank you.[779.51][779.51](applause)
John, could I say something to Debbie?
Yes, sir, please.
I think I'm the longest-serving member. I've just worked with her for over twenty years, and I just want everybody to know, she is an efficient lady. I have never asked her for anything. Sometimes she might say, "I'm not sure," but in a few minutes, I'd get a phone call, and she says, "I got what you wanted." So my hat's off to her, and I appreciate all your help that you've given me. Good luck to you.
And that is the most I've heard Nathan Little speak in a council meeting since I've been doing this.[817.11][817.11](laughter) Chris Bailey, could you do the next presentation, please?
Yeah. Okay, so I sent an email out last week and warned y'all that this might go on a little bit longer than I anticipated, so... and I know it went far better in my mind than it's probably gonna come out. I hope I do this justice. I made a couple of notes and some things. So obviously Debbie's my aunt, for the ones that don't know. My mom, can't lose it right off the bat, my mom is her twin sister, and growing up, this was my buddy. You know, we would... I would always hang out with them, we'd go shopping, we'd do different things, and you know, I remember I got tricked into going Black Friday shopping one time, and I walked around in a coat hanger. That was fun. Didn't do it the next year, but she would do anything in her power to embarrass me, to hop, skip, and jump, grab my arm, this, that, and the other, and whatever, and we talked about it the other day. When I started here, I never dreamed that I would be, I guess, honored to be able to give this speech and hopefully the hell will make it through it, which leads me to how I got hired. You were telling a few of them in the back when they came in, but I remember I was working in Atlanta at the time, and my mom calls me and tells me, you know, the city of Monroe at the time was Monroe Utilities Network, said they're hiring a position. You know, if you're tired of driving, you know, you put in the application, see what happens. Well, so I put in an application, I didn't call Debbie, didn't say anything. Next morning, probably about seven, I get a phone call, "Chris, it's your Aunt Debbie."
I saw your application, you're gonna call up to Debbie, and you know, are you sure this is what you want to do? Because you know if you interview, they're gonna hire you. And I'm just telling you, you know, this city, you know, Monroe Utilities, this is a different kind of place to work, and you know, looking back, she was great.[990.26][990.26](laughter)
Here lately, I've thought more and more about that, I probably should have listened, but here we are. You know, so that, I feel like maybe for twenty years, I've worked hard enough to get to this point, to where I get to do this. And now I'm gonna tell about how you started. So I'm not real sure, you know, how your job post and whatnot, I remember the, you know, the Monroe Holstow House, I think, I don't know if that was where you directly came from, I didn't get that far, but I know you started November twelfth, nineteen ninety, and you told me that, you know, you applied for two positions essentially, it was bookkeeper and cashier. Well, when you talked to them, they asked, they said, "Well, which position are you applying for?" And she says, "Well, which one pays the most?"[1041.33][1041.33](laughter) They said bookkeeper, and she's like, "That's the one I'm applying for." So the history of jobs started out as a bookkeeper. She was administrative secretary, an administrative assistant, a commission clerk, an executive assistant, a personnel administrator, an administrative division manager, and a city clerk. If that doesn't speak to what the heart of the city is, I don't know what does. In her thirty-two years here, five mayors, five general managers, which would have been with Water, Light, and Gas, Monroe Utilities Network, seven city administrators, the best assistant administrator there's ever been, and possibly the worst, since I'm the only one, and one totaled car in the parking lot. I don't know how many of y'all know this, you know, there was a customer, I think, that came in once upon a time, and his foot stuck on the accelerator, or the accelerator stuck, and he went round and round our parking lot, took out a light pole, she saw that, I think, called the police, called the fire department, goes outside, realizes her car was what he came to stop on. So that was what broke the circles of the parking lot.[1120.63][1120.63](laughter) But, and then obviously, we didn't do the counts on commission members, on council members, because it's probably quite a lot of them. So what does all this mean? Like I said earlier, Nathan said it, you're the constant of this city. If we have questions, you're the one we call, you're the keeper of things, and if you don't believe that, she's got an office that's full of file cabinets that we've spent two weeks trying to get stuff out of, get it to where it needs to go. In a lot of cases, we fill positions because you can't replace the person. This one, we're pretty much feeling we're replacing it with four positions, because it's just, there's no way one person can do it. And I'll tell you all this, when I tried to think about what I wanted to say, I wanted to make sure that it was...
Our relationship with her.
And then I got to thinking about it, the more and more I ran through in my mind, it's everybody's relationship. You've been everyone's aunt, you've been everyone's sister, everyone's mother, you've been everything for everyone. Your relationship with me is the same relationship you've had with everybody else. I have never, in all my years, heard one bad thing said about you in this city. To me, because of you, this city, its employees, its citizens, the ones that have come before, the ones that are here, the ones that'll come in the future, are better because Debbie Kirk decided to serve here. You know, I put in here that September twenty-first, nineteen fifty, the world got two wonderful It's hard enough looking over at you, and then I see my mom sitting there. You just... y'all represent what's so great about this town. Y'all are the best of us, you're certainly the best of me, and you'll never be replaced, you'll be missed forever. I remember, Brian, you stood up here two months ago and gave a retirement speech for Mike Parker, and I got to thinking, you know, you look around and you see the faces of people that are probably within the next five years gonna retire, because that group is just kind of aging out. You know, your faces change, your faces fade, memories live forever, and that's the key of this, because you've become, what I feel like, I look at the ladies in the back, you've become a role model for so many people of what we should be as an employee of the city. You're a hero to so many, and you don't even know it. Through one of the most difficult times in my life, you helped me survive on a daily basis, whether you know it or not. And twenty years ago, I never thought we'd be here, but it's like in the snap of a finger. I just, I want to think back to everything, and I know everybody else does, so thank you from the city of Monroe, from the council, from directors, from the mayor, from the family that's here, from the employees that are here, from everybody. We love you, I love you with all my heart. We couldn't ask for a better city clerk, and we couldn't ask for a better Debbie Kirk. And I will shut up before I absolutely lose it. So plaques and whatnot are small tokens, but I had help putting this together, and it says, "Debbie Kirk, happy retirement, thirty-two years. Thank you for your leadership, dedication, and dependable service over these many years. Because of your impact, Monroe will forever be a better place to live and work. You will be missed by us all, and we love you." So this is your... and again, you can put it in your office for the next two weeks. I put the dates on the bottom, even though I thought it looked a little bit like a tombstone, but I wanted you to know when you get old, when you started, and when you finished. And we love you, too.
Thank you, Debbie. Not to make this go on too terribly much longer, I know, Debbie, you're kind of bashful about this whole conversation, but I'd like to recognize your family behind you. We know that you put up with a lot for us, too. We also know that you love her more than the rest of your family, because Heather stayed home because she has a sniffles. I mean, so apparently, y'all are the ones who love her the most, and you'll make sure that I... you tell Heather that I said that. And the ladies in the back, thank you so much for coming to support Debbie, and we know you support her every day, and we thank you for all you do. And it's now six twenty-four, and we're gonna move on, so if you folks in the back don't feel like staying, you can come up and hug her on your way out.[1505.23][1505.23](laughter) Thank you. Okay, moving to public comment, I do have a one has signed up, Mr. Ralph Corona, to discuss preliminary plat application at Madison Ridge. Mr. Corona?
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for having me over this evening.
Yes, sir, thank you for coming.
My name is Ralph Corona, and I am with Madison Ridge Land LLC. We submitted an application for a preliminary plat a year ago, literally right before it went... moratorium took place, so I understand another moratorium is to take place extending into June of two thousand twenty-three. And what I would like to ask council is to limit the extension to three months on our Madison Ridge application review as it comes up now in January. We would like to ask, based on the following, our initial application was turned in prior to the initial moratorium. We had a meeting earlier this year with the city to review a few items on our application that was in progress. Even during the moratorium, we worked on a few things that were requested that we take care of, such as easement matters that we were able to get secured and recorded. We do, we have secured sewer capacity, which we understand is currently available for this project, and also we understand that the city has approved a residential project multifamily for about two hundred units. All this being said, we just request that you limit our application to three months out of your sixth month moratorium.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Thank you for coming in, and we'll discuss this further, but we'll discuss it amongst ourselves, and we'll talk more, and I'm sure we'll be in more communication with you.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Corona, I appreciate you coming in. Moving to our business items, we have our city administrator update. Mr. Probst?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just hit a couple of things. Obviously, I don't want to step on any other reports, but what a successful parade we had last week. Preliminary numbers are not fully in yet, but I think we're well in excess of twenty thousand folks here visiting downtown that evening. Couple other items of note, the eastbound on-ramp is under construction, the westbound is about to start out there at Charlotte Rowel. Together, that's over six million dollars of investment that the state has put into Monroe with very little matching funds from ourselves and from our counterparts of the county, so that's a big win for our region with those two projects. The long-waited bypass, keep giving you the same update, February is what the state has told me as to when they're targeting full-on construction, so looking forward to that. And we have a few other just small GDOT projects in and around town, you might have seen them patching on seventy-eight today out there near Cherry Hill, a few other small projects, quick response type of things that they're working on soon as well. I've asked them to also research the best methods for fixing the traffic issues and the turning movement issues at Highway eleven and seventy-eight at the overpass. It's obviously a pain point, it's gonna become more so in the future. Unfortunately, T-SLOSS did not pass here in Walton County, although it did pretty well overall in the city precincts, so we were hoping to leverage some additional monies with that to go along with some state money for that fix, but nevertheless, we're looking for some lower-cost alternatives to improve safety at that intersection.
Thank you, Logan. Any questions for Mr. Probst?
Logan, there's a pothole as you turn right off of... onto one thirty-eight next to Zaxby's, I'm talking about, right there. Is there any chance that quick response unit might be able to go over there and patch that bad boy?
Yeah, that just may be state maintenance, we need to get them out there, if they haven't already been notified. Mr. Stilt?
Yeah.
And also, for everybody's knowledge, the... And also, for everybody's knowledge, the, when the T-SLOSS failed, every precinct in the city of Monroe voted in favor. Every other precinct in the county voted against. I like to think that's because we were very judicious with taxpayer funds. We've listened to what they said, and we've acted accordingly, and they trust that we'll spend their money wisely. We'll do better on the marketing side of the T-SLOSS when it comes up again, and I know it will come up again, but just wanted to let you know, City Monroe got after it in favor, and we just couldn't come, overcome those objections from around the county. I'll move into the assistant city administrator update, Mr. Bailey, are you good?
Yeah, I promised to speak a little better through this one and not cry. Month of November, trash on sides of the roads and whatnot was up quite a bit. We picked up our crews 5,500 pounds, just our ground screws and whatnot, off of rightaways and whatnot. The Blaine Station RFQ that we had out that closed November 18th, we only had one submission. And essentially with that, Logan and I read through it, we're gonna kinda drop back and punt a little bit. We may meet with them, I think, after the first of the year, talk with them, but it's gonna have to be something to where it's competitive, to where we have multiple firms looking to develop that property. I think we get the biggest bang for the buck. Terminal building construction is still ongoing. It is, it's got rooms, it's got a roof, windows, whatnot. It's actually starting to take shape. Rainy weather's slowing them a little bit, but it's dried in, so they're able to move forward. We submitted our capital improvements to the state and to the FAA the Friday before Thanksgiving, so that's good for the next four to five years. Obviously, we tweak it over time. That helps us with our funding, with our overall budget planning here at the city. Matthews, again, is continuing to get close to that finish line. We had the fence put around the playground. They were working on the privacy fence to separate the backside of the houses on what used to be that back area parking lot. And then, too, this past Saturday, we had a great dedication event for the disc golf course, and they had a crowd there. So that was nice to finally see we're to that point. Traffic calming is complete. We have our final walkthrough tomorrow with the engineers to go over anything, any possible areas of improvement, which we know of one that we're gonna take a look at, and hopefully get that done, get them out of here. Leaf season is going slow. Leaves are falling, the pickup on it is behind. Our truck is still at the manufacturer in Statesboro, where it's been for the past week plus. Obviously, you know, the sweeper we mentioned last month, slight fire issue, but we do have a rental that we've had now for approximately two weeks, and we're working to get caught up. Jeremiah will present the 2023 L-MIG for the request to do that this year, let you know the streets that will be impacted. And Danny and I are working rather hard to try to push us towards a SWIFER grant, which would help build our infrastructure for our recycling program. We sat through a webinar today, and he had sat through one, I think, the week I was on vacation. And that's just, it's an arduous process that we're going through, working with several people and staff here at the city to try to get it through, and hopefully we get some money out of that. And I'll be glad to take any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Bailey? Thank you, Chris. Moving to Department of Request, L-MIG, Mr. Still?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What we have in front of you for approval tonight is our 2023 L-MIG project. This is the annual paving project we do with funding through the state as well as a local match. This year, or next year for 2023, we will be given $178,925.21, which we were required to receive this grant, a 30% match, which is $53,677.56. This will be proposed to be spent on Walton Road, Lakeview Drive, and a section of Millage Avenue between East Church and Davis. On Walton Road, we're proposing a deep patch, inch and a half at a minimum, milling, overlaying, striping. Same thing on Lakeview Drive, and on Millage Avenue would just be a little bit of patching and primarily overlay. Back early this year, we, we spent through a CIP project some money with our engineers to do a road assessment through artificial intelligence. And through that process, everything went through the city. The roads were assessed, given a score, and then we took this number, $232,602.77, and said, went into this software and said, hey, where do we spend this much in the best way, manner, in the best manner? And this is what came out of it. So what you have, what we're seeking is approval to send in this, this project list to the state, get it approved, and this work will be done June, July, August, summer months. The paving, the overlay will be done by the county, and then we'll contract out the milling. We'll do the patching, and the striping will be contracted out as well. I'll be glad to take any questions.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Are there any questions for Mr. Still? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Dickinson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Boyce, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to utilities, the approval of First Amendment to the power purchase contract. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor said, this is the First Amendment to the power purchase contract between MEAG and the city of Monroe for solar capacity, not, not capacity, but delivered energy. If you would read, if you read the document there, it seems that some issues have happened in the solar industries that have required the contractor to want to raise the price by almost four cents per kilowatt hour, or a half a cent a kilowatt hour, and move that term from 20 years to 15 years. It's still an economical product. It's still cheaper than our normal produced energy at the plant. It's still good for Monroe for all the reasons we said before. If there are future amendments, because this does say the First Amendment, we will have to, you know, check that out when those come, but right now, I would ask for y'all to approve this amendment.
Are there any questions for Brian? Nathan? What do you think? Oh, are you good with it? Okay. I'll entertain a motion, please. A motion by Mr. Little to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gregory, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Moving to old business, the preliminary plat review at River Point. Mr. Probst?
We're gonna go to table that. We got the final development agreement in their hands today.
Sounds perfect. I'll entertain a motion to table until next month.
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Malcolm, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bradley. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to new business, this is a public hearing for the zoning ordinance, Code Text Amendment Number 14, Mr. Calendar. How are you?
Doing fine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quite a few of these amendments to describe here, so I'll try to be as brief as possible. So the first amendment that the city council will be considering for their first reading, proposing to modify 620.3 of our land use table. This is our commercial zoning land use table. It proposes to remove warehouse, excuse me, mini self-service warehouses, and warehouses isn't allowed use in that district. It's just striking those from being allowed in the B3 district. That's the only current zoning district that those are allowed in commercially. And moving forward, we're proposing that the self-service mini warehouse in the M1 district under Section 630.3, we're proposing that it be modified to be limited in its location within the city. We're not asking that the use be struck from M1, but we are proposing to add a note to the M1 zoning table that those uses be limited to the, or be excluded, excuse me, from the federal enterprise opportunity zone and urban redevelopment authority boundary within the city, except those properties that are located within a half mile of the Vine Street and South Broad Street intersection. And I've got some maps here, if they provide any clarity at all on what this describes. Basically, you have a large swath of M1 properties east of the city. That land use would continue to be allowed on all of those properties. And then there's a handful of M1 zone properties near Vine and Broad. That's where those land uses would now be permitted. They would now be excluded from any M1 zone properties that are not in those locations, and that includes West Spring Street along Midfield Drive and a handful along Broad Street, both North and South Broad Street. The next amendment is adding language to our MHDO district, where we have our, the Walton Mill Overlay District. We're basically clarifying a statement, the, the rules in this section are specifically designed for condominium developments. It doesn't state that. We're adding this statement as a clarity for any future developments there. Moving forward to Section 645.3, we're proposing to add existing two-family or duplex dwellings, that are the same thing, to this, to the infill overlay district, so that there are properties out there that can be sub-divided, currently are, have multiple duplexes on one lot and were owned under a single ownership, and they're being sold off, and individual owners are buying these duplexes, and they cannot subdivide their property. So this would only allow an existing duplex in the infill overlay district. The next amendment is adding a zero lot line setback to our commercial zoning parameters. It essentially allows, and this is basically a notation being added to that, we're allowing for existing multi-tenant shopping centers to have a zero lot line, a fee simple property to be created through their building. They would have to meet the standards for separation, and that includes fire, life safety, and what have you. Most buildings are built in that manner already, so we were asking that, we're asking that amended, that amendment be included here to allow for a shared parking arrangement in addition to the zero lot line. We have a couple of situations in the city where this has already been done, regardless of what our ordinance has acquired, and this would allow those that are seeking to do that now with the city to have a zero lot line through their multi-tenant shopping center. The next amendment proposed is to require basically a matrix. You already have in your code now a requirement that all developments have five different house designs inside of a development, so that none of the ones that are adjacent are all the same. We avoid the cookie cutter pattern. This is an additional requirement we're putting in that, that when they turn in their plat to the building off, to the code office, that they go ahead and show us the matrix of meeting that requirement. So we're not changing the requirement, we're just beefing this up to make this easier and streamlined for both the permittee and the code office. In Article 8, in that same article itself, we're adding a new section that will require all new single-family residential and mixed-use developments in the city to be rezoned as a planned district. This was something I know we had discussed at our council retreat in September. This will specifically require that any undeveloped zoned properties for residential or mixed-use development, they would have to undergo a rezone in front of this council for a planned district. And the last amendment proposed in, for these zoning ordinance is in Section 910, we're proposing to remove the trellis allowance for the exterior features that are on the outside of single-family dwellings. Currently allowed, the trellis extension's been interpreted as a pergola, so we're changing that to remove that. The intent was to have a roof or shed roof on that, so we're clarifying that with a statement, removing pergolas and trellis extensions as counting towards that requirement. They can still be added to a house, but we're just not allowing it to be counted towards that requirement. And finally, for the zoning ordinance amendments, we are proposing to overhaul the garage standards for single-family dwellings. This is similar to a variance this council heard not too many months ago regarding the garage locations on single-family dwellings. This is reflective of that variance that the council approved, and is reflective of the dimensions that were considered that night, in addition to some research by staff. This is what we've proposed, and it basically states, all attached and detached garages shall be located a minimum of 20 feet behind the front of a dwelling. We prefer the garage access for dwellings is rear or alley loaded, and for the purposes of the requirement, the front of the dwelling shall be the heated floor area at the frontal orientation of the dwelling. So you have those dwellings that have, may have a protrusion in the front or a room in the front, and there's a porch recessed behind that. So we've added the requirement that if the front door is recessed, then the 20-foot measurement will begin from the front door. And that's all that I have for the proposed zoning amendments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Calendar. Are there any questions for Brad?
I have a question on the first one, Brad, on the self-storage warehouses. Do I understand directly that there are areas of the city today where those can be placed that would be eliminated and not allowed? Is that correct?
That's correct. If we're, the First Amendment that you asked about, that we're talking about the commercial, is that correct, Mr.?
Right, the self-storage warehouses, yeah.
Yeah, we're, this is proposing to eliminate those from being allowed uses on, on properties that are currently not developed.
And what's the purpose of this amendment? I mean, why would, why are we, why did you, I'm sorry, why are certain areas of the city being excluded? How was that, how were those areas of the city selected to be excluded from those warehouses?
Make sure, I think I understand the question. So let me make sure I answered them, answered correctly. So we're talking about, was it the M1 exclusion that you were saying? I think that's the one you're asking me about. Or are we asking generally about both M1 and B3? I think I can answer both. So if recall from our discussion at the council retreat, we had discussed this as being a land use that the council wanted removed from a commercial zoning district and have it limited to a M1 zoning district. And so the First Amendment does that. It removes it from the commercial zoning district because, as we recall from our council-district discussion, and I'm gonna point to the map here on behind the council, there was a large number of B3 zone properties that are currently not developed within the city that would be potentially a site for a mini storage warehouse. As our discussion at the council retreat, the council's desire was to remove that as an allowed use within the B3 zoning district. In addition to that, we've included the term warehouse, and that's the type of warehouse like, that would be solely a warehouse that's for the distribution of goods. And so that land use was also excluded on that land use table. And so moving forward, you also have mini self-service warehouses that are allowed in M1. So we didn't wanna eliminate that use completely from M1, so we analyzed the locations within the city, similar to, go back, to the locations that were involved with the B3 properties, where we have our most development potential, the B3 zone properties, which includes the two that I've described. So I've got both maps on the screen here. You can see the federal opportunity zone here, which is included in that note, includes all of those properties, but it excludes all of these M1 properties out here on the east side of the city, so you can still develop mini storage here. And it excludes in the note everything within a half mile of South Broad and Vine. So we're including the M1 properties here. So basically, here and here, mini self-service warehouses would still be allowed as a permitted use in M1, but we're striking them from areas like along Spring Street and some of the sporadic ones that are located inside the interior of their city, along, near the downtown area. I hope that answers, I hope that answers your question.
It does. I just was trying to understand it a little clearer.
Yes, sir.
My question would be, the last one, what's the purpose of setting that on garage 20 feet on the front of the house?
It's a good question. So the, your current requirement now is that all garage doors be, must, must be side or rear facing. And currently, that's, I think that we discussed this in our council retreat, that's, that is, that is invoked and allowed a house design that's not very palatable with council. It still is a garage-forward type of home. They just turned the garage to the side. So the intent of this requirement is to push the garage back. Clubside Plantation is the best example I can think of, just right off the cuff, of the type of home we're wanting. We're wanting the home, the heated floor of the home to dominate the lot and not the vehicle. That was the basis for this, this requirement.
Is that gonna matter if it's 20 feet back of, of, even with, the, the scratch footage of the heat at home is irrelevant to the garage?
It's, that's correct.
It's more of an aesthetic, I think, and if you remember Norman on Felker Street, the rezone, or the variance that came, those, those, many of those houses there don't even have garages. And this was a remodel of an existing home, and because of the width of the lot, he was not gonna be able to do a side or rear entry. So he asked us to vary it to be able to do a front-entry garage attachment, but... So he asked us to vary it to be able to do a front-entry garage attachment, but, and he was willing to do a setback of 20 feet from the front of the house just for an aesthetic, you know, for the aesthetics of it all. Am I right? Am I saying that right?
Yes, ma'am. And if I could add to what you just said, that was the perfect description of that. And we, this will now allow home, the garages to face forward. We don't even allow them to face forward now based on the current requirement. So it creates other anomalies within the city where someone is trying to put a garage even detached behind the house. The current requirement now prohibits that. It's a weird side and rear-entry requirement. So we, this would actually permit a forward-facing garage, but while we're asking, is that be recessed back? The 20-foot dimension, to be quite honest with you, that's a space, that's the dimension of a parking space. So someone who wants to park next to their house in front of the garage is in line with the front of the house, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I get it. Because you see a lot of folks with front-entry garages that are at the front of the house, and the people that don't pull all the way in, so they just back up towards the street.
Yeah, and if someone, and I hate to say this, you know, a lot of people fill their garages with stuff.
That's right.
So, so this way, this way, the car, we continue to kind of make the automobile not the dominant feature of the home. That's really the intent. There's plenty of designs in the city that exist that are great examples of how this can be achieved here in town, so.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
I have one regarding self-storage, because we know we have two that have probably been built in the last, I guess, year that are very easily seen. Is this new construction, or would this be reconfiguration? If you did renovation of a space and changed it to interior storage? Or are we, frankly, what goes on inside the building if you can't tell that it's storage? Do we really care?
This is a good question. So currently, your ordinance now does not differentiate between indoor and outdoor mini-storage facilities, because indoor's kind of a new trendy thing. But, so the outdoor storage facilities that you see that are in progress in the city, the ones that do exist that have been built, they will continue to be allowed as an existing non-conforming use. So the ones that are in progress that are being developed, that this amendment wouldn't affect them. We weren't, you know, we're not going to put a stop, work on their site. But moving forward, they wouldn't allow, be allowed to expand those outdoor operations or anything like that based on the amendment proposed.
Okay. So, I'm sorry if I didn't get the answer right. Renovation versus new?
When you, I'm sorry, please clarify that question for me a little bit.
Okay. No, we're not allowing new construction.
Right, new construction. And I'm, I'm sorry, when you said renovation, you mean?
Somebody buys an old building in an area of the city where there's been previously manufacturing or?
Sure.
Whatever else. And I'm thinking specifically of the former Universal Rundle Building, that they wanted to use as storage, and forget where it is, but just, and he said, well, if we just made this all into internal storage, would that be considered new or?
Now, here, that would be considered new, but to your quest, to your example that you used, Universal Rundle was one that we did include. So those properties that are in the south edge of the city, zoned M1 near Broad and Vine, those are in, those are in the allowed notation proposed right there in that amendment. So, Universal Rundle may not be a good example, so.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to get, somebody can't come in and build brand spanking new next to Hardee's, for instance. But if they go to those areas right behind Hardee's, that, that big building, I think part of it's attached to Amici now, and they decided they want to do all interior storage there?
That's not, that's not a current, well, we're, that's inside the CBD, so now another layer of what we're asking, but that's not permitted, so.
I don't know how to ask a question any better than that. Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, but that, if it's zoned M1, those are the areas of the city that you're at that we're proposing to restrict, if that answers your question. So no, no one can take an existing building and do anything interior that's mini-storage now based on the current definition of your ordinance.
And the definition is what?
It's basically just many self-service. It's whether it's indoor or outdoor.
Yeah.
So we don't differentiate between what you're describing, Mr. Mayor. We don't differentiate that type of warehouse.
Okay.
I mean, is it something that we could do later in a cleanup? We could do that, because this is only one section of the zoning ordinance text amendment. So, I mean, if you guys wanted to pull that out and clean that up with better language to differentiate, we can do that. We can continue to track with what it is, or we can, you know, amend it now. So to speak, there's still a second reading next month.
Okay. Well, then, if it's okay with y'all, we'll open the public hearing. I'll declare this portion of the meeting open for public input. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Mr. Preston, are you in favor or against?
Against.
That's, that's okay. It looks like you're the only one who's coming. So before, before you come forward, I want to recognize Pat Preston, Nancy Smith. I always introduce Nancy as my favorite LSU cheerleader. And did we have anybody else with you, ladies?
Yes.
Okay, and Eric, I think he's going to send you up to talk. Charles, would you like to come speak against ordinance?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name's Charles Preston. I'm a City of Monroe resident, here to speak against the M1 portion of the amendment that's before y'all today. Not that I'm against any of the mini-warehouse outlawing going on in the state or in the city, because I actually agree with you. I think that the traditional metal buildings and the galvanized fencing and barbed wire that you see is not a good look, especially in these commercial portions. However, I just, you know, y'all are briefly talking about it. I do think that there should be a portion of that that needs to be addressed, is the conversion of buildings in Monroe. I don't, I don't know how deeply the council or staff has gone into, you know, a lot of these older buildings are going to be coming up, and there's, you know, unfortunately, there's not a lot of people that fill up these buildings. I have a building myself under contract that we're looking to invest, you know, roughly over $3 million into it to, you know, convert a building that is all metal today into nice brick, a new paved parking lot, sidewalks, all the stone and brick that will match the building near it, which is the BB&amp;T building. And we, unfortunately, it is a fully enclosed climate-controlled storage facility for 50,000-square-foot building. But that type of business is not currently identified in this, this ordinance that's up here against y'all today, because there's a difference between a mini-storage outdoor units in comparison to a fully enclosed climate-controlled facility. The two totally different products, two totally different looks. It's, it's an opportunity that the building that we're looking at is older, it's, it's not in wonderful shape, it's nothing against the owners, they've, they've kept it up as it is, but we're looking to do something completely different today, that if this passes today without consideration of a different type of storage in Monroe, our project will obviously not happen, and that building will not change, and that part of the town will not change either and be uplifted. So I just implore y'all today to maybe take another look at the M1 portion of this modification and, and maybe ask the staff to go back and look at that and just see where our type of business can be included in this modification and addressed, so not only for us, but, you know, future renovations of these older buildings, large buildings that are in Monroe, because, you know, one day, they're all going to turn over, and y'all have a wonderful staff that they're always forward-seeking, forward-looking, and this may be an opportunity for them to take that, this opportunity to say, okay, let's think out five, 10, 15, 20 years to, even when, you know, a lot of us are going to be gone, that, to go ahead and handle this problem now so that when somebody else comes along, they don't just, you know, throw in anything that you have not addressed. So I just, that's kind of what, what I'm here for, is just to ask you to go back and look at this M1 portion, because I, I actually agree with you on all the other. I think they don't need to be right on Highway 11, right on Broad Street, you know, the metal buildings, you know, it's just not a good look. There's a better use of that property. And so that's not what I'm against. I'm just against the M1 portion of this modification. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Preston. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak against the ordinance? I'll declare that portion of the meeting closed, and I believe we can talk about this again next month, right?
You go. Further down the list.
Further down the agenda. Okay. I'm moving to the Development Regulations Text Amendment Number Six. Callender?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Trying to be brief, these are all technical changes to our development regulations we had spoken about in our retreat several months ago. Are the first proposed amendment to your development regulations, these haven't been changed in a number of years. So we're clarifying the procedure and the, the acceptance and review process, and then the moving forward process, basically for a preliminary plat, proposing there be a 30-day review process on the intake, and then we schedule it for no less than 30 days prior to its first available planning commission once the submitted is complete. It's really no different than your current process now. This kind of defines that a little bit and removes it from the zoning and the conditional use kind of, the ZPL sort of aspect of treating a preliminary plat in that manner. So someone could submit a preliminary plat anytime instead of 12 times a year for our deadlines, go through a 30-day review, get it corrected, and then get it onto a planning commission and council agenda. That's what we're proposing in this amendment here. The next is changing the paper size for plans. We're trying to get those all uniform, 24 by 36, changing some language in the preliminary plat section, just cleaning up some technical errors. And the stamps that are shown in the plats now, they're a little unclear, and some of them are unnecessary, but we are codifying the current policy now of how plats are treated, when plats expire. Currently, they expire one year from the lack of recordation of a plat or any type of slight development plans being approved. We're including that language now in the code. It's currently not there now, but that's how they've been treated by policy. It's just being codified into language. That is specifically, again, that's one year from your approval. So we're not changing the requirement that council has, we're just clarifying it in the language in the stamp. Moving forward in the Article seven, Section 7.4 for final plats, writing the same procedure, the 30-day review intake and a 30-day scheduling, that's what your current ordinance now requires. This just gives us a clear review procedure and then has a complete package moving forward to council when it's ready. We're changing the sheet size to be uniform, clearing up some old 19s that are in the ordinance. That's how long it's been since some of this was cleaned up. It's been since 1999. We're actually moving some stamps that were put in the preliminary plat section into the final plat section, so we're reversing those, putting those there. Moving forward to the minor plat, same thing, changing the plat size, clarifying some language on the approval method. I'm not, I'm just paraphrasing all this. I'm not trying to specifically read each one. There's quite a bit. We're removing one of the approval stamps that was unnecessary, and, because these don't go to council, we're removing that stamp from minor plats. They're approved at the administrative level by the code enforcement officer, clearing that section up. Moving forward, there are a, there's a section regarding the arrangement of streets within the city. There's one requirement that sticks in there that says we should discourage all route traffic. We're removing that based on your current comp plan and some of the goals of your comp plan to encourage connectivity within the city, so we're just clearing that up, so there's no conflict there. In Article nine, Section 9.16, there's some numbering. We're going to clean that up. And finally, in the last amendment to the development regs, we're proposing to remove certi-bonds from the available performance and maintenance bond form type, which now that will only be limited to cash and escrow, you know, and that's acceptable to the city and/or an irrevocable letter of credit from a bank that's approved by the city. We're going to remove the certi-bonds just because it's a little difficult by the city to call these when it's time, when developments need that, if there's some aspect of a development that's lacking that we need to call the bond on, because, you know, you call the bond and the insurance company in New Jersey is gone. We're just going to reduce those down. This is a pretty typical trend in most jurisdictions to remove it down to just those two types, to cash and escrow and an irrevocable letter of credit. And that's the final proposed amendment for the development regulations. I'm happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Mr. Callender. Any questions for Brad? I'll declare this portion of the meeting open for public input. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of these amendments? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against these amendments? That was easy. I'll declare this portion of the meeting closed. Moving to the new business application, beer and wine package sales, Jack Creek Grocery. Is this application in order, Paul?
Yes, Mayor, that application is now in order.
Okay, is the applicant here? Seeing no, oh, yes, okay. Thank you. I think you can probably stay right there. This is usually nothing, so just one second. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Garrett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Boys. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Thank you, folks. Appreciate your coming and best of luck. Yes, sir. Moving to the appointments of the DDA and Convention and Visitors Bureau Authority and Urban Development Agency. We have two appointments expiring on December 31, 2022. First, Mr. Whitholder, I would like to continue to serve on the Downtown Development Authority and Convention and Visitors Bureau Authority and Urban Redevelopment Agency. I need a motion to reappoint Mr. Whitholder for a three-year term to expire on December 31, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Mr. Garrett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gregory. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Mr. Hold will serve another three-year term to expire in December of 2025. Next, Ms. Lisa Reynolds Anderson would like to continue to serve on the Downtown Development Authority and Convention and Visitors Bureau and Urban Redevelopment Agency. I'll need a motion to reappoint Ms. Reynolds Anderson for a three-year term. Mr. Dickinson? Mr. Dickinson with the motion and Mr. Garrett with the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the first reading of the zoning code text amendment number 14. Are there any questions for Brad?
Mayor, I think the point that you brought up about the renovation of old buildings, maybe for the interior storage, and what Mr. Preston brought up, his discussion is very valid, and I would like to recommend that we table this meeting for another month, give staff time to look at that and see if there's a way that that can be adjusted or worked in.
Clarification, is that just for that portion of the ordinance, or is it for the entire package?
Just for that portion of the ordinance.
I have a motion to table that portion of the ordinance by Mr. Bradley. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm going to go with Norman on that one. Thank you. I don't know how we move forward with the reading of it. Do we want to?
No, it's been tabled, so you could move to the next. You've had the public hearing at this point, so you've complied with the ZPL because the public hearing has now occurred. Let me ask a procedural question. This went to P and Z, did it, Brad?
It did. This went to planning commission.
All right, so you've had your public hearing now that was advertised here. It's been tabled from this evening. It's going to go, it's, it's been tabled as a whole. Tabling is that one issue that you've raised, but it really needs to be tabled in toto. You don't really need to split it out because you've got an amendment that addresses them all. If you split them out from there, I think you might run into an issue of needing to re-advertise.
Okay.
So I, I would table it. They've had their public hearing. It was advertised, had an opportunity to show and present any public input. If you address it at the next council meeting, moving forward with first reading from there on everything. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Paul.
Yes, sir.
We will bring this back up at the January 10 council meeting. Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Thank you, Norman, for the second. We did vote on that, right? Before I move forward, we did have an all in favor.
No, you didn't.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
I'm abstaining.
Yes, ma'am. I have an all, all opposed, like sign. I have motion passes with one abstention by Ms. Malcolm. Moving to the first reading of the Development Regulations Text Amendment Number Six. Are there any questions for Brad? Does council wish to have the ordinance read? I move away from reading. Thank you, Mr. Bradley. We'll have the second reading at the January 10 council meeting. Moving to the second reading of the Mayor and Council Annual Salary Increase Ordinance Amendment. Are there any questions regarding this ordinance? Amendment, are there any questions regarding this ordinance? Does council wish to have the ordinance read?
I think it'd be a good idea.
Thank you. Please.
Thank you, Mayor, this is an ordinance for the Mayor and City Council of the City of Monroe, Georgia to increase annual salaries of the Mayor and City Council members of the City of Monroe, Georgia, where the City of Monroe, Georgia has been vested with substantial legislative power to adopt clearly reasonable ordinances, resolutions, regulations relating to its property affairs and local government for which no provision has been made by general law, and whereas pursuant to OCGA 3635-4, the City Council is authorized to fix the salary compensation and expenses of its municipal employees and the members of its municipal governing authority, and whereas Section 2.09 of the City Charter permits the City Council to determine the salary of the Mayor and the City Council members by ordinance and in accordance with the laws of the state of Georgia, and whereas the city desires to increase the salary of the Mayor and the City Council members pursuant to the aforementioned authority vested in the City Council. Now therefore be it ordained that the Mayor and City Council of the City of Monroe do hereby declare and adopt this ordinance as follows. The preamble of this ordinance shall consider to be and is hereby incorporated by reference as if fully set out herein. The annual salary of the Mayor of the City of Monroe, Georgia shall be $14,400 or $1,200 per month, the annual salary of each City Council member of the City of Monroe, Georgia shall be $9,600 or $800 per month. Pursuant to OCGA 3635-4, said increases in salary shall not be effective until after the taking of office of those elected at the next regular municipal election, which is held immediately following the date on which the action to increase compensation was taken. This ordinance shall become effective January 1, 2024. This constitutes the second reading of the ordinance, Mayor.
Thank you, sir, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adopt the ordinance.
A motion to adopt by Mr. Dickinson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bradley, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the second reading of the speeding, the speed zone ordinance amendment, are there any questions regarding this ordinance? Would council like to have it read? It's pretty standard, I think, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve by Ms. Malcolm, is there a second?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in-
Well, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Will we be posting these on our website and making more awareness brought to these new speed limits?
We sure can.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Any additional comments or questions? We'll get that on the website, so all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the resolution for the preliminary plat moratorium extension on June 30th, Mr. Probst.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, we are looking at several items that affect city services and development, such as utility projects, like our wastewater treatment plant overhaul, and our code of ordinance implementation, we just covered some of that just a few moments ago. That all takes time to implement, so given all of these factors, we hope the wastewater treatment plant will be at substantial completion by June 30th of 2023, which will give us a little bit more coverage as some of these other developments come online. It does not increase our capacity, it just increases our ability to handle what's already here and what, you know, influence we have. So those two factors alone, along with some others, they're contained within the resolution. The staff has recommended that we extend to June 30th, 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Probst, are there any questions for Logan? So, I'll go ahead and bring it up, as Mr. Corona came in, do we want to exempt anybody after three months, did you want to keep it six months, did you want to do three only?
It's got to be all or nothing, can't treat anybody differently, so resolution as drafted is for six months, y'all always have the authority to cancel the moratorium at any time that you deem it appropriate based upon the current condition of your utility infrastructure and the like, but as it's drafted, it's drafted at six months, if you want the resolution to be drafted differently, we certainly can do that, or you can pass it differently, and the resolution can be comported to the motion, but you got to treat everybody the same.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the ordinance as is.
I have a motion to approve as is.
Resolution, excuse me.
But, sorry, thank you by Mr. Gregory, is there a second?
Second.
That was second by Ms. Malcolm, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the approval of the District Attorney Agreement for Bank Violent Crime Prosecutor, Mr. Probst.
Turn this over to our District Attorney, Randy McGinnly.
Evening, everybody, Mayor and City Council, thank you guys for having me, I know a lot of you guys, if I don't know you, my name is Randy McGinnly, I'm the DA in what is called the Alcoa Judicial Circuit, and most of y'all probably know that basically the DA's office covers Newton and Walton County, and if you don't know, we handle everything, all the criminal cases that are not citations, for the most part, there are some citations that get sent up to us, but it's somewhere around 6,000 cases a year between the two counties. And essentially what I'm asking for, and I'm going to have to have a little bit of a, some clarification a little bit, because you guys are a bit of the outlier of the other fiscal years, because y'all are a January, January 1st fiscal year, correct? Okay, all the other three entities are July 1st, so I sat about, while I was sitting down, I was thinking about that, and I'll kind of make a, how I think that will affect my request, and I'll explain that here in a second, but I'll come back to that, but I just want to give you all a little bit of information, and the idea behind this was that there's a number of circuits, two or three other circuits that have done this, where they have cities providing some funding for the DA's offices, and Lagrange was the first one that I was aware of, and they're in a bit of a similar boat that we may be in down the road, is the big old Kia plant went in down there, and that really changed, you know, just increased the population, and obviously that may happen here down the road, something similar, I'm not really sure, it's kind of up in the air, maybe, with Rivian, but this request is to jointly fund a new position for the DA's office that would be for a prosecutor to handle cases in both Walton and Newton County, and they would handle essentially gang slash gun violence cases, and I'll explain this a little bit, that a lot of those are cases involving multiple defendants, and give you all some examples. Covington approved this request, you know, three or four weeks ago, they somehow, I think they put it on super fast. Walton and Newton, I was, went before both boards of commissions last week, and they both approved, or they both approved it, so all three of the other entities have already approved this. As I said, it's going to focus mostly on multi-defendant cases that involve, as I said, either gang and/or gun violence, and I can give you all some examples, just some of the things that, with our office, and why I think this is necessary, some of these cases just include an absurd amount of data, and an absurd amount of information. A lot of, and you guys probably see this in your own lives, Facebook and social media is a good thing, it's also a very bad thing, people love to share things on social media, this is just an example of one case, and all the social media records we have, essentially we can get search warrants and obtain social media records for people, but that's some 50,000 pages of Facebook, Facebook records. This is, and I've blacked out some names, because there's still some pending cases that are here from the City of Monroe, where it's five separate cases that involve shootings of houses, where people are either driving by, or standing outside, or shooting, and now, some of these cases, a couple of them, they may not be intending to shoot into the house, but obviously shooting at somebody who's standing in front of a house, which means the bullets often go into the house as well, and a lot of these involve the same parties over and over and over again, and I say involve, that could be, in this situation, some of the people who shot at defendants in first case, shoot at victims in first case, then victims shoot back at people that are associated with defendants, and so it kind of goes back and forth, and a lot of these individuals are all involved in these same five cases. This is another example of the amount of data we have to deal with, this is one case that's 144 gigs worth of information, and as you guys know, that gangs and guns don't just stay in one place, don't just affect one city, don't affect one county, and they affect the entire circuit, it's just off Walton County, that means Monroe, everywhere, Social Circle, not as much, but obviously Monroe, Walton, Covington, and Newton definitely have some crossover, and even with other counties, I'll give you an example, we have a nine co-defendant case involving armed robberies and aggravated assaults, where one of the individuals received a bond, was on an ankle monitor, and he is now charged with a murder in Barrow County that he committed with ankle monitor on. There's also cases, a lot of the fire shell casings that are collected by law enforcement are sent to, basically, I'll say the feds, just for simplicity, to analyze, and we have one specific example of a gun that was used in a shooting in Monroe, in the county, and in Covington. And we've had numerous murder trials where there's no gang charges, but all the witnesses or gang members are all testifying about being involved in gangs, they all have gang tattoos, and so it is, it is a common thing here in Walton and in Newton. Something you guys may not know is that the Department of Corrections every month sends, not just me, I'm assuming, law enforcement that are allowed to view these things, everybody is being released on parole, and what county they live in, what address they're being released to, the entire, and this specific list they do is anybody that's been validated as a gang member while they're in prison, and they have their own criteria that validates someone as a gang member, but it is numerous things, either they, a lot of it is just they self-report, I'm in this gang, a lot of people when they go to prison want to self-report because they don't, if they're a blood member, they don't want to put, be put into a pod full of Crips, just as an example, but every single month, we have four to six individuals that are paroled out to addresses here in Walton Counties, and a lot of them in Monroe, that are validated gang members being placed on parole, leaving prison. And this is something that is part of a larger effort that a lot of the law enforcement agencies have come together in the last year, so a few months ago, the DA's office, Walton County Sheriff's Office, Monroe Police Department, Social Circle Police Department, Newton County Sheriff's Office, Covington, Portale, and Oxford, all got together about obtaining some funding for some gang tracking software, that really helps tie people, places, guns together, and that was something that GMA grants through Homeland Security, GMA grant, Newton County already agreed to basically front the money of $100,000 to have all these agencies have access to this software, and it's a reimbursable grant, so once that check is cut, Newton County will be reimbursed from a GMA grant, so it'll cost all of those entities nothing, it would have cost, a lot of the entities would have had to split $50,000 and 10 grand each, I think they had said they, they weren't going to have Portale or Oxford be involved in the paying because they just don't have the population or the crime, and so we kind of have a, not kind of, we do have buy-in from, I said all circuits, misspelled circuits, of all the agencies when it comes to attacking some of these gang issues. How I came up with the costs with the fiscal year of ending July, or June 30th, was essentially asking for, from January 1st through June 30th, of $30,000 for each entity, and that breaks down is this individual who'd be going back and forth between the two counties and all over, the cities and counties would need a vehicle, there would be equipment, supplies, training, gas, which would come out about $8,000, and the employee cost would be that cost, and I'll explain that, that employee cost is not paying the salary of the individual I'd be putting into that role, because if I did that, that salary cost would be much more. This is essentially funding a new position to replace the person that I'm putting into that role, if that makes sense. Essentially, someone that would be going to that role already has years of experience, has tried murder cases, gang cases, child victim sex cases, and so this would be, to save the entity's money, would fund a newer position, someone more out of law school, and that employee cost would be, including, that's from essentially January 1st through June 30th, that would include all of the costs of an employee, of all the insurance and all the things that come along with that, and so that rounded out to about $120,000, which split four ways, is $30,000, and obviously, I know we're here for, you know, a single budget year, future years, obviously, the cost would come down because there would not be a vehicle, training and supplies would come down, the employee costs would go up because it'd be for a whole year, and so that'd be about $25,000 per entity in future years, and I guess what I'm, kind of have to modify what I'm asking for, because I thought about this, was if you guys are a, January 1st through December 31st, essentially the other three entities have said yes to $30,000 from January 1st of 2023 to June 30th of 2023, so the $30,000 would cover that, but then, I guess what I'd be asking for you guys to do would be go ahead and approve from the funding from July 1st through December 31st, which would be half of that $25,000, if I'm doing my math right, that's $12,500, in addition to the $30,000, so it'd be, and I know that sort of may throw a wrench or something, because I, that's not what I had thought about off the top of my head, or for something to go ahead and approve, $30,000 to come back before July 1st of next year, and ask for that additional amount, but again, that's something that, I'll be honest, I didn't really think about the difference in fiscal years, and I'll answer any questions about that. As I said, that position would, is capped as far as what step it would be on the Newton County pay scale, I think, again, this just, it saves this proposal about $30,000 by paying for a new position versus funding somebody that is already in that role that has the experience and is paid more. The other thing that I want you all to know is that the person would keep documentation of what cases they handled, what, where, where those cases were, what city they were in, what county they were in, what type of case, to be able to share with each entity to make sure we are, you know, transparent, providing you guys with the information on that, the funds would only be used for that position and/or its supplies and trainings, and so anything that was not used would not just come into my budget and be used for some other purpose, it would be only for this, and so anything that was not used could be refunded to each of the entities or rolled into the future years down the road. I also want, and I know, Chief Watts, there's been times that the DA's offices worked with the Monroe Police Department and the feds, and done some bigger gang investigations, and one of the issues that we often run into is you arrest eight, 10 high-ranking gang members, and then you have a large number of, I'll say, you know, just younger kids that want to try to fill that vacuum, and that can lead to some violence too, because they are doing some just dumb kid things that, with guns, and so I also want that position to be somebody who is working with SROs, working with schools, going to schools, talking to schools, talking to kids, because that's one of the issues we have to deal with too, is trying to make sure these kids know the dangers of gangs, and so that position would also do a lot of that community work as well, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, concerns from anybody at all.
Are there any questions for Mr. McGinnly?
So Walton County proper, are they, have they agreed to put in?
Yes, ma'am, yes, Walton has, Newton County has, and so has Covington. Yes, ma'am.
I compliment you on creating the position, I think it's a great idea, and then we need to go forward, I am a little concerned on the split between the counties and the cities, because the city taxpayers are also paying county taxes, so they're in effect getting double hit.
And I understand that, and I think the, my response to that is that the, when you look at the overall numbers of crimes, in Newton and Covington may be a little bit different, well, it is different than Walton and Newton, I'll say, is, there is, and I don't want to, always the danger, I don't want, this is not some scare tactic that we live in some dangerous area, but there is violent crime here, I mean, and there is, and when it comes to the violent crime involving guns, to say that the proportional amount of it is more in the cities, I think is a fair statement, when it comes to Monroe and Covington. Now Covington, again, is a little different, because Newton County, the west side of Newton is, is up there in violence with other areas as well, but I think when it comes to the driving of things such as gangs and guns, what I see is that often a lot of the, especially the, I don't say organized, but the, when it's groups, like that example of five separate cases, those were all here in the city, and that's why I use that example, that was a, I think it was two or three different areas in the city, and frankly, I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to hide by anything, a lot of those areas, it's maybe the same three areas that a lot of the violent crime happens, and what we see is a lot of those areas have a lot of very good people that want to live in those areas, but they also want to live in those areas crime-free, and so I think the idea behind the city, and I understand your concern, is that it is sort of a double tax to city residents to a certain extent, is that that's where a number of the shootings and violent gang-type cases are coming from, and, but again, I, the case I showed, that was 144 gigs of information, I can get a whole lot of details, it's a pending case, but it is a, is a death penalty case, and the actual shootings occurred in the county, they were, the victims were taken from the City of Monroe, and so it was a, it was a big joint investigation, so it didn't actually occur in the city, the actual crime itself, but it started in the city, if that makes sense, but that's my best response to that, is I think that's where a lot of the gun and gang- gun and gang crimes are occurring, and same thing in Covington as well.
Again, I think it's a good idea, and I will probably vote for this, to, in particular, since the other three entities already cast their vote. I just caution council members that we need to be very careful going forward in, with the county funding, which our taxpayers are already funding the county, for the DA's office and other things. And it's, I just think we need to be careful going forward, that we have a fair representation of tax money.
And that's why I think the portion I have about, one of the, the person that's in that role is who wants to be making sure they are keeping track of what they're doing, and where the cases come from, and the type of cases, and make sure they report, we can report that back to you guys, um, regularly, I mean, at least yearly, if, and if you get, if anybody asks before that, obviously, I have no problem providing information about that, even before the next year.
I do have a comment about it. I mean, I'm very much a proponent of doing this, but at the same time, um, this sort of echoes some of what Mr. Bradley was saying, I think. We don't wanna be paying a disproportionate, uh, amount for this. One of the concerns I have is why is Loganville not contributing, because they have a major problem over there.
Well, and what I, well, I'm sorry, I don't wanna cut you off, if you had-
That's all right. So, anyway, the deal is this, I mean, we need to get feedback on this position, and we need to see a result, that it has an impact, that we're not just doing some fancy window dressing, and these folks are still doing whatever they're doing.
Right.
You know, I see them every day, walking the streets in Monroe, and they've got the little gang affiliation stuff, some of them are for real, some of them are just wannabes, I think, playing. But I know everybody in here has been seeing what's going on, uh, in Atlanta the last handful of weeks, and, uh, you know, it's moving down. I mean, you got 12-year-old kids out there carrying guns, you had a 14-year-old kid, I think it was in DeKalb County, who shot himself. Yeah. It's gotta stop, and if this helps, we need to do it, because we, we, we can't have this kind of thing going on.
And if I can just respond briefly, I know Mr. Probst, I think in an email, had asked me about the Loganville thing as well, and what I say to that is, one is, when you look at the total number of cases we get, um, Loganville's way below Monroe, way below the county, wait, because you also have to think about a, a lot of what happens in Loganville does not happen in Walton County, it happens in Gwinnett County. And what I'll say is, when, a lot of the things you read in the paper, about a lot of the violent stuff, has happened on the Gwinnett side, and also, a lot of the, we don't get a whole lot of violent crime on the, on the Walton side of Loganville. We do get some, I mean, obviously, everywhere gets some. A lot of that, in my experience, has been people that are not from Loganville, are coming from Lawrenceville and things like that. And, and so that's, but, but again, I, I, I agree with the concerns, and, and that this would be something that I want to be as transparent as possible, and make sure we get results to you guys, but also show you things that we're doing as well.
Yeah. So my recommendation would be to go forward with what we budgeted first, that first $30,000, and let Mr. McGinley report back to us closer to mid-year, and then we can see about allocating that additional, since we're about to pass the budget tonight.
Right, and I apologize for that, and also, that, I mean, there's a, obviously, if there's, you know, I, is this something that I will fill that other position January 1st? No. I, I mean, so the reality is, there's gonna be probably some potential for, that money may not all be spent by, um, June 30th as well, obviously, so.
And, and I did ask those proportionality questions to him a while back, when he first introduced this, and the numbers he provided, they make sense, in terms of what Mr. Bradley had asked, and what you'd asked as well, Mr. Dickinson.
All right. With all that said, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the, uh, $30,000 to move forward with this.
I second that.
I have a motion to approve the $30,000 by Mr. Dickinson, and I have a second by Mr. Bradley. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Thank you for coming in, Mr. McGinley.
Thank you all very much.
Moving to the approval of the 2023 budget resolution, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is for your approval of the fiscal year 2023 budget. Citywide budget is $81.6 million, this is a 7.8% increase over the fiscal year 2022 budget. This also includes, um, the capital budget for 2023, which is $35 million. This is a, um, an additional eight full-time positions that we'll be adding to the budget, five additional police officers, one position in our Parks, newly funded Parks Department, one position in Telecom Department, and one additional position in the Solid Waste Department. If you have any questions, I'll be, um, happy to answer them, and this is based on the changes that you requested at our budget, um, hearing, our public hearing that we had a couple weeks ago.
Thank you, Beth. Are there any questions for Ms. Thompson? Council wish to have the resolution read? I, I do, actually. Mind doing that for me, Mr. Rosenthal?
This is a resolution adopting the 2023 budget for the city of Monroe, Georgia, appropriating amounts as shown in each budget as expenditures, adopting the revenue projections, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, to be resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Monroe, Georgia as follows. Whereas for the purpose financing of conduct affairs, the city of Monroe during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2023, and ending December 31, 2023, the budget of the city's revenues and expenditures for such period is prepared and submitted to the city council by the city administrator, and so approved by the mayor and city council. Whereas the amounts listed are the appropriations so authorized by the mayor and city council, and are approved for the amounts and purposes indicated. Whereas any pay classification or job description change is contained and funded herein in the budget are approved for the amounts and purposes indicated. Whereas any organizational chart changes or descriptions contained herein the budget are approved as indicated. And whereas the rates listed are so authorized by the mayor and city council, and are approved for the amounts and purposes indicated. Whereas a budget amendment is considered any action of the mayor and city council to purchase items not included in the original budget figures, be it further resolved, the expenditures shall not exceed the appropriations authorized by this budget, and that the expenditures for the fiscal year shall not exceed funding available. So adopted by the mayor and city council of the city of Monroe this 13th day of December 2022. That is the resolution, Mayor.
Thank you, Paul. Are there any questions before we ask for a motion? Would someone like to go ahead and make a motion?
Move to approve.
A motion to approve by Mr. Gregory, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Little. A second by Mr. Little, and a motion by Mr. Gregory to approve. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the LAP resolution of the CDBG 2022 requirement, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is a requirement of the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, which is also DCA, in conjunction with the recently awarded 2022 Community Development Block Grant, which is CDBG, to the city of Monroe. This resolution is a require, requirement of the city of Monroe as part of the funding mechanism associated with a grant to clear the special condition, number one, which is a language access plan, and it also names me as a language access plan coordinator. Um, and that is a change from the last one.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Beth? And would anyone like to hear the resolution read? Not all entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Gregory, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Malcolm, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Uh, moving to adopt the 2023 council meeting schedule, Mr. Probst.
Thank you, Mayor. We do this annually, this is for the 2023 council meetings, um, that will occur at 6:00 PM on the second Tuesday of each month, per the Code of Ordinances, Section 241. My general feedback, uh, that I receive from you all is that we'll continue on doing the, the formats that we've done this year, um, with special needing, meetings as needed.
Thank you, Mr. Probst. Are there any questions for Logan? Any comments? Hearing none, all entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Gregory, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bradley, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the resolution of the referendum for license for package sales of distilled spirits. Are there any, I'm sorry, this would be Mr. Probst.
Yeah. So last year, we followed up, we, we had a, a resolution to allow it on the November ballot, uh, we had a bit of a snafu with the elections office, but, uh, there is a way forward to resolve this for the next set of elections. So what we've done here is crafted a new resolution and updated it to be either on the, uh, Tuesday, March 21st, 2023, um, citywide special election, should that not occur, or in the alternative, there would be another election on June 20th, 2023, that, um, we would be able to have that referendum.
Are there other elections on those dates? I mean, the-
So, we, we don't know for sure yet that the Board of Education is gonna have one for March, that, we're supposed to know, we're supposed to know that in a couple weeks, by the end of the year, so, um, we're, tentatively, we're putting this on this resolution as March 21st, 2023. Should that election not occur, then will, the next citywide election will be June 20th, 2023.
Is there anything on that one? On the June 20th, other than this?
Do you remember what that one was? I have to reach out to Debbie.
It'll be the same thing. If they don't, my understanding is, is that if they don't get that BOE election set for March, then that BOE seat election will be in June. So, my understanding is, is that if there is a citywide special election in March, it'll be this, this issue of package sales and a BOE position, board, open board position, and if it doesn't happen in March, then it would be those same two issues would be on the ballot at the June special citywide election.
After that, the next date, should either of these not occur, for whatever reason, we'd have to do another resolution for November of 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Probst. Are there any questions for Logan? Or Paul? Before, uh, entertaining a motion, how do we go about making the rules for how it's all gonna happen? How many we're gonna allow?
So I'm, I'm already drafting those right now, so really, you've gotta pass the resolution, see if it passes, uh, but then you can adopt and codify those, those rules into your ordinances.
Got you.
We'll discuss those at a, at a subsequent meeting.
Thank you, thank you. I'll entertain a motion, please. Going once? Going twice? Will not be on the November ballot. Moving to, uh, just, to district-
Just for the record, the resolution dies for lack of a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Um, moving to district items, uh, anybody have anything to discuss or report regarding your district, Ms. Malcolm?
No, just wanna thank all the city employees for a phenomenal job, and, as everyone else has stated on the parade, and, um, just appreciate. Wonderful event.
Thank you, Ms. Malcolm. Uh, Ms. Crawford?
We had the same compliments on the parade.
Thank you. Mr. Boyce? Mr. Bradley?
Nothing.
Mr. Garrett?
Nothing.
Mr. Gregory?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, nice jacket. Mr. Little?
No, not Little, but I still get complaints on his feed, Mike.
Tell him to slow down. Tell him to slow down. Mr. Dickinson? Okay, I, I do have, uh, have one thing, um, you know, Habitat for Humanity Walton County and Habitat Gwinnett, uh, combined to join forces, uh, last year. And, um, we've had two houses, both built on Turner Street, to go along with the original two that we've had, um, two, uh, nice families, um, one who works for, uh, our public school system, Heather and her son Deacon, um, and then the Boone family have just moved in, or will be moving in this Saturday. We blessed and closed out the house, uh, this, this past week. Anyway, we've talked about affordable housing, um, anything you can do, anybody you know who could support the organization, whether it's on a team build or a donation, Habitat could certainly use it, uh, and if you don't know who to contact, Tyler Gregory is on that board. Also wanna, uh, thank Norman Garrett, for he provided lunch, uh, for the event on Saturday, and barbecue was just outstanding. Now, I need a motion, please, to adjourn to executive session.
So much.
I'm gonna give the motion to Ms. Malcolm, and the second to Mr. Bradley. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. We'll adjourn to executive session. Thank you, everybody.